All right.
Push whatever you need to. Okay.
Okay. I'd like to call the second study session of the day for Thursday, November 2nd, 2023. This one to encompass boys baseball. Can we immediately rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, for the record, Mike, would you do roll call?
Barb Twusley.
Present.
Mike Moffett.
Here.
Dave Beeshold.
Present.
And Cindy Suze is absent.
Okay, and also here is Pat. Nicole Bennett, our legal representative. Okay, item number four. The reason we're here tonight, guys, is we're here to talk about the lease agreement that you have that's been on board since 2016, that after looking at it, we found it to be, because it wasn't gone through the proper protocol, and by that I mean it did not come to this board as it was back in the day, and get discussed, and voted upon, and approved, and recommended to the town council. It's only gone to the town council. So that missing of that step has made this agreement that you guys have invalid. Does it make it obsolete? Doesn't make it, it's invalid, okay? Based on Indiana state law. Our legal representative brought that to our attention. So that's the reason we're here. We'd like to clean up some of that language. We'd like to be able to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward. And pretty much that's it. As a board, we're going to hear some of the questions that the parks people have, or legal might have. We'll probably have some questions concerning, because some of us are familiar, some of us are not. I'm probably a little bit more familiar than most. But we're not going to sit here and try to tell you what we think, and I hope that you'll give us the same courtesy and respect. So with that, I will start with Superintendent O'Shea and Director of Recreation, Patrick, to kind of give them an opening statement.
Yeah, so, hi, guys. Yeah, so just kind of go off a little bit with David saying stuff. We were just going over it, and I know you guys do a lot with the fields. I know with all the St. John baseball and your travel, and then your recent changeover from the Tomahawks over to the Bulls. We, from the park side of it, wanted to see, see what else that we can either help with it, or what we can, you know, do as far as programming side of it. I know, like, we have talked a lot about, you know, we did the Easter egg hunt and stuff in the Fourth of July Freedom Fest. But being able to, you know, discuss ballfield usage at times. I know you have here with, you know, I'm not sure, I know the Southwood Civic or Hartland Park is in here. I don't think there's anything for Civic Park technically either, as far as I'm aware of, as far as like an agreement with that, too.
Could I interrupt one second? There was back in 2016, the same thing. It was a 25-year lease with Steve Kill and Mike Forbes and the park president, and Beth Hernandez. That was 25 years. It was the lease, don't quote me, I think it was a dollar per year. I had that as well.
Was it just for Civic Park?
It was just for Civic.
And that was separate?
It was a separate lease, because there's other verbiage in there that was told to us that wasn't going to change.
Okay, I've not seen a copy, have you?
No.
Nicole?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Could you produce that copy?
I'd have to dig that up. That was from, like I said, 2016.
If you could, would you? The only reason I say that is, you know, otherwise, we're going to have to try to do our due diligence that way. And I don't know.
Beth may have it.
Beth may have it, right.
Maybe in the court treasurer's office. Perhaps.
But yeah, if you could dig up your copy, that'd be great.
How long was that till?
That was a 25-year lease.
Starting in 2016, correct?
Correct.
Do you think that was exclusively Civic Park?
It was just for Civic, yeah. And then, because it was a public park, again, the way I believe it read was we had first right for practicing. I don't know if you remember that. We were responsible for taking care of all within the fields, within the fence, cutting field maintenance, prep material and whatnot, scheduling. And then anything after that would be open to.
I kind of believe it was probably a mirror image of.
Similar.
Seems to be.
But I know they did say there was more to it, within the town had a previous lease and.
Yeah, like I said, I've not seen. I can't comment. But anyway, continue, Mike.
And but so it was, wait, so, yeah, when the field is open, it's open. Because you guys necessarily don't lock Civic Park, correct? Hartland Park is pretty much the only one you guys lock. So, and just to, and, you know, the other thing, too, is just, again, I know you guys do a lot with the ballfields and adding the material. You mentioned everything inside, you know, in there. But like, I think it's for this particular redoing this, or revising this, is, you know, making sure we have understanding of what you guys are doing, understanding of what the town would be doing, what the parks would be doing. And just for the fact, too, where it's 15, 20 years down the road, that it's not as, confusing might be a bad word or stuff, but just so there's more detail in there. You know, like you say, that stuff, like you take care of the stuff inside the ballfields. And I'd use the example of the last meeting, too, but like, you know, the ballfield fences, for example, you know, like, you know, is that inside or outside technically, you know, depending on.
We handle that, too.
Where you're at, stuff like that. Right, right. Difference, I, you know, I did want to go over some of the, which I don't have all the costs here. I didn't have all the electric costs. But I did want to go over some of the water costs that we've been looking at, you know, as well. Mainly in trying to get an understanding, a full understanding of, you know, what is used as far as the baseball, the Babe Ruth Field, and then the Hartland ballfields that, you know, you guys had used. And, you know, I mentioned, like, on the programming side and stuff, you know, I, we, as Parks and Rec and stuff now, we have been trying to do more as far as activities at all ages and all levels, which we've started, you know, this year. It'll be, it'll be a process until it gets to where it needs to get to and stuff like that. But being able to, you know, have access or use the fields, either, you know, rather be Hartland or using Civic and stuff like that for, you know, either our own camps, or trying our own baseball camps, or whatever and stuff like that, kind of throughout. I know, like, you guys do that White Sox camp, I believe, and stuff.
Yes.
Now, I don't know if that's a fundraiser thing and how, or how that goes. However, if it goes back into St. John Youth Baseball or anything like that.
It goes back to the program.
Okay, that's why, that's why I don't know and stuff like that. But as we do stuff now with Parks and Rec, like, you know, traditionally, like, those are things that the Parks and Rec, you know, should be doing, or should be trying to do in some aspect and stuff like that. Again, this is not to try to take anything away or anything like that, but just try to figure out a solution and stuff that will benefit, you know, both sides, basically, kind of throughout and stuff, so. And I don't know if, you know, if it can start here at least. I don't know if everyone knows exactly, like, the stuff that you guys do take care of and stuff, or kind of like the maintenance you guys do and stuff. We talked about that a little bit at the last meeting, too, but, you know, maybe if you can start off and just explain the, what you guys do.
Yeah. So it's a never-ending job, I can tell you that right now. So to sit here and quantify time. Cole is our field maintenance manager. We, from starting now, we're shutting down, winterizing all the systems at Hartland and Civic. As we fire back up, so spring, we'll get shipment of material. Cole, what is roughly, we spent on material to start the year?
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to have a bunch together.
If, about, I was going to say five to six thousand to get rolling. That's just field material for the four fields in Babe Ruth. This year, we put about probably five to eight thousand in Civic and field material. That just gets started. Offseason projects, we put in turf mounds on fields one, two, three, because they were getting torn up. And the amount of money we were having to repay to get them re-clayed was getting ridiculous. And they're getting torn up after every game. I mean, you hear the number of how many kids we have. So we just thought that would kind of be more beneficial. So we put turf in with portable mounds, just on those three fields. We had the fields, all the lips added, more material added. I think that was, again, off the top of my head here, guys, without sitting down, digging up all my documents. I think that was 35,000 this year for the four fields. Four years ago, we took a pretty big undertaking with Babe Ruth. That was with Turf Dog Project. That was about $55,000 to fix the field that hadn't been done in over a decade. Fences were redone at Babe Ruth. We did a bunch of fence work at Hartland, the four fields. We fixed the bullpens, which was a safety issue, kids running in. So we had the entrance within the field itself and not on the exterior. We have a retiree that cuts our grass, all the fields at Civic and Hartland. We pay him. He probably cuts that twice a week, three times a week, when it's rolling in the spring and summer. He does that. We have field maintenance kids, if it's too much for all of us. I mean, Cole, again, to quantify his hours when we're rolling, it would be probably 35 to 40 hours a week to maintain. Stock all the dugouts, all the spray, everything that you think you have volunteers that coach, and they don't. It's throw everything apart, you got, things are broken, chalkers, and I'm trying not to bore you guys, but if you're asking, these are little things that nobody thinks of. The chalkers, the string.
Base plugs.
Base, the stakes, the plugs get buried and lost and thrown, constantly redoing that. Again, the fields will have to be retouched up again this offseason, because it's a wind tunnel out at Hartland, so half of the material is blown apart. Kids kicking, tearing up the lips. That's just a, that's a small sample size of just field work. Then the concession stand, we have a manager that runs that. We have a full staff of kids, typically high school kids, that work that.
Do you? Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Whether it be here or Hartland. And again, that's constantly rolling every night during the week.
Is that something, the concession specifically, that is handled food safe? Certified, and you can.
Yeah, I have a concession manager. And we have that inspected, cleaned daily. We get, we bring people in for our bathroom. We have a company that comes in weekly to professionally clean it. The men's and the women's, we take care of that. The concession stand's cleaned all the time. We have the kids, again, she has a separate field maintenance crew picking up garbage around the facility, throwing out the garbage, trying to maintain that.
Inside and outside the fence?
Inside and outside, yeah. So when I say we take care of the field maintenance, inside, when there's, and you've been there, Mike. When there's garbage thrown up, I've been picking up garbage for a decade. When I walk through it, it drives me nuts, but that's just an overview of field maintenance-wise and a little bit of concession stands. All that money from concession stands go back, goes back to the league.
No, yeah, I was just more concerned about it being safe.
Everything there is funneled back into the league and reallocated to the field enhancements. Again, over the decade, we've had scoreboards installed. We did the turf mounds, all the, I mean, there's several. You saw the total was 380,000 over four and a half years, all put back in field renovations. We've been starting to dump more money into here, which is a public park, but again, we.
So did we.
Yeah. Oh, I know you did, I thank you. The batting cages, which was a death trap.
Yeah, the netting that we did at Harlan.
The hitting net, that was with the help of the town, I think, about five years ago. The town, that was right after, that was actually about the lease. That's what started it all. The, you remember that? The netting came down, started tearing out all the concrete at Hartland. So that was a big project. That was about $125,000. I think, what did I miss?
That's about it, I think. I mean, it's constant, though, right?
Yeah.
It's recap on the major projects, but yeah, the minor stuff keeps us busy year-round.
I'm sure it does. I have a little history with that, so I understand. Pat, anything you want to add?
Yeah. I guess as we move forward, and especially as we get into some of the details with, with a new agreement, so to speak, I just want to make sure that we are always coming back to and making sure that our, the town is our number-one priority. And obviously, you know, the kids and these, this program is a big priority. But when it comes to whether it be liability, whether it be what is best, I think, I think it's important that we all sort of understand and come to the agreement that the town is, we need to, we need to make sure that the town is protected, that the town is benefiting, and I don't know if benefiting is the right way to say it, but is not liable or at risk in any way.
I'm not following, like, in regard to what?
Well, currently, the agreement that we have had in the past has obviously put us at risk. It's, it is, it's not an agreement, so to speak. So, just making sure that.
Yeah, I guess we're not, I'm not, I haven't seen the 2016 agreement compared to what Nicole's reviewed on that or what authority she's relying on. So we didn't come here prepared tonight to discuss whether the agreement was valid or not valid, or what liabilities are out there. I mean, Nicole and I can hash that out.
No, no, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is.
That's not.
More, more of what I'm saying is that we're acting all in good faith as what is best for the town.
Yeah, I don't think these guys would have invested, you know, what was it, $400,000 over the last, you know, four years if that wasn't the intent. So I don't think anybody's here saying, you know, and if it was going to be a situation where we thought it was confrontational, or that we weren't, we wouldn't be here, right? I mean, it wouldn't have gone this far. So we're here to talk. We're here to see what the concerns are from the town side and try to address them the best we can. I just, I mean, there's some information that obviously we can get here tonight, and there's some that we'll have to go back and gather and provide.
I agree. Barb, any questions?
Five guys up here if we weren't, if we weren't interested in cooperating.
No, not at this point in time.
Mike? Okay, a couple of things I have. Obviously, there's a new association this year with the Indiana Bulls, correct? Okay. What started that, and why was that something that you guys decided to do? Just give me a little background.
First and foremost, it's just a name change. It's a brand. I've been, like I said, the Tomahawk's been around for about 10 to 11 years. And it's always been giving the kids, as they come through our program, the first opportunity. Talking with them, as the Bulls north, I just think it gives them more opportunities, a little more with name recognition than a town ball travel team, per se. So trying to, if these kids want to continue on and play 13, 14, 15, 16, whether it be how far they want to take it, as they go into tournaments, that's all it was about.
Well, how is that different from the Tomahawks?
Joe, would you mind if I?
Sure.
So I'm going through this process with my oldest son. And part of the process of playing at a high-level college commitment is it's really, really tough and challenging if you're playing with a town organization. So this was the next step to get, allow some of the kids that actually can play in college, you know, exposure, per se, so that they don't have to go to Illinois. They don't have to go to Indianapolis. They don't have to go XYZ places. They can stay and play in St. John, in their hometown, and still get great exposure. This is one of the reasons why I still continue to volunteer countless number of hours along with these other gentlemen at this board, is my goal is always to allow kids to be able to play baseball, and especially at high-level baseball. So it was kind of the next evolution of taking, you know, what Tomlinic started eight, seven years ago, excuse me, with the Tomahawks, to get to the next level. So unfortunately, my son had to leave St. John at 10 years old, and I had to go to Illinois and play and practice to get him to a team where he could get exposure. Whereas now, my youngest son, hopefully, he's nine years old, he will never have to leave the Bulls organization. He will be able to stay and play in his hometown from eight years old until 16 or 17. That, that was the whole, that was part of the whole thought process of taking, taking the Tomahawks to the next level for young athletes to be able to compete at a very high level.
Yeah, it's not, we're not trying to go 30 teams. It's always been, we had 11 teams with the Tomahawks, I think I said, and we're still at 11 teams. This is not a money grab. This was never about going to multiple teams to create something that we're not. We were just trying to, like you said, give them a better opportunity. That's all.
Well, I just asked.
Recruiters from colleges, then, this is a named organization. It would come and view the youth then participating in St. John?
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean they come to St. John, they're part of an organization that has better exposure.
As they're going to tournaments.
Yeah.
Whether it be the Tomahawks or the Bulls, they were always going to different tournaments.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, but I think we both know that the Indiana Bulls are going to get a whole lot more opportunities than the St. John Tomahawks are going to get. Okay.
100%.
And I think that relates to more opportunities for the St. John kids that are playing in the program.
And what are all the kids currently playing on them in that program from St. John?
I would, again, not knowing his exact percentage, I would bet you upper high 80s. And if I could just say one thing about that, all the kids that play with the Tomahawks are not from St. John either.
No, no, I understand. I'm just asking the questions.
Would you imagine, because you're, it's a more sought-after league, you would be pulling more from other towns?
I thought at the beginning, but it didn't really pan out like that. We were losing kids, guys, this is, again, we were losing kids constantly to surrounding organizations in here. Organizations, the Flash starts up four years ago. We were losing kids from our program. Do you follow?
I do.
Constantly.
I mean, there's Five Star, Flash, Shockers. They were taking all St. John kids.
See the Bull Central, too. That was your best kid, obviously.
Top Tier, Bull Central.
No, I understand.
Were taking, now, I'm not saying they're stealing them, but they see that as.
They're providing opportunities.
Yeah. They got a, whatever it be, a cooler hat. I always used to say, it's the cool hat they want. Is that it?
I don't know.
What is the ultimate answer? So to ask what you're saying, like, about the risk or anything, I'm just going to tell all you guys right here, man. I put a decade into this. I've had the town at the best interest since I've started. I started off as a T-ball commissioner, as a coach. I've cut grass, I've picked up garbage, and I'm, Mike, you saw me do it. I am not ashamed to have done it. I feel like I've done a lot for the town, and I don't, I just, the priority's always been there for me. There's no, I don't feel like.
That was just a statement. It was, it was an opening statement. It wasn't in regards to any, anyone specific. So I would, if it came off in any way.
I'm not from St. John, but I, I've always had St. John number one. All right, I was the one promoting St. John Tomahawks. I'm the one trying to keep every single kid in this league. In-house has always been the heart. I've said that from day one when I took over. It is the backbone of the league.
I'm just, I'm just asking questions. Is the Indiana Bulls a non-for-profit organization?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and we have documentation for that?
100%.
Okay.
Where are they out, are they in St. John?
Indianapolis Bull, they're, I'm sorry, they're in Indianapolis, out of Westfield. So, and these organizations are starting to do that. Top Tier is the next one, coming to Northwest Indiana.
Oh, I was a part of Top Tier in the 90s, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
They're coming, too. So.
I get it, I understand. No, I'm just asking the questions because.
Yeah, I get it.
It was early on, upon that happening, I'm not going to try to mask it. There were questions brought to us, how is this happening? Why is this happening? Not that we were taken by complete surprise, but it was something that we weren't made aware of until after. It was.
I do remember, I called, I did inform Mike.
Yeah, and I told him after you told him, but you guys, it was already done deal.
Before we agreed, I did call. I did inform.
Yeah, and they, yeah, and they knew. I mean, that's what started this after we had.
But I think some of them questions is what brought us to looking into the contract or the lease agreement that we had with you guys, and making sure that some of them provisions were in that, so that we had no liability issues, or you didn't have any liability issues. But this, it kind of brought it to light, okay, for lack of a better word. And that's when we asked our legal to look into it and to make sure that, as a board, as a town, as an individual, as coaches, that you guys weren't exposed. Because at the end of the day, the deepest pocket always takes the hit, okay? That would be the town. And as you know, that's a constant battle nowadays to try to protect yourself. And, you know, we're no different, they're no different. So that's kind of where we were coming with that. So then, is the Tomahawks then done?
Yes.
Okay. So is, is St. John Baseball chartered with any organization, namely Cal Ripken?
St. John, no, we're independent.
Okay, you're completely, so you're not Cal Ripken, you're not, obviously, you're not.
We were up until four years ago.
Okay.
And it was so, I don't know, what's the word I'm looking for, Carl?
One-sided.
It was very one-sided, and the amount of money we were paying Cal Ripken.
Okay. So does that include the Babe Ruth, then?
Babe Ruth is still Babe Ruth, and they play, they're, so our in-house plays within itself. So those 450 kids, all the teams are obviously drafted, and then they play their in-house schedule. Babe Ruth does play surrounding towns.
Correct.
Because at that age.
But is that part of your organization?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Because when you hear the word Babe Ruth, that is a senior program.
It's just, yeah.
That's a senior program of Cal Ripken.
13 to 15, correct.
Okay, so I mean, that's, Cal Ripken was put in.
Correct.
As the younger addition to Babe Ruth, because it used to be Little League.
Yep.
Then Babe Ruth.
We don't know what to call it besides.
No, I understand.
It's just the most term that everybody knows.
It's a term everybody recognizes.
But it's independent. It's not a Babe Ruth affiliation.
No.
Okay.
No.
As the formal organization.
It's within St. John Baseball, it's St. John Baseball.
If you guys, if you guys continue to, that's fine, but, yeah, we got to make sure that it's not Babe Ruth in the agreement.
Yeah, no.
Well, I guess my point is, we have to make sure that, yeah, we don't, in some way, shape, or form.
It's the lowercase Babe Ruth.
Oh, yeah, there you go. There you go.
Associate ourselves with that if you're not part of that organization.
No, I do understand.
It's more of a label on a agent.
It's just a label for people to understand.
I understand.
But we handle all that.
So, yeah, I guess, in going back into that, like, when, did you guys go over that contract that was sent over that Crown Point has?
I wrote that.
You did write that?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
That's what I said, you got the man of the hour that'll.
I mean, honestly, as I was going, and we've all talked about this, as we were going through it, I like that, it's a good contract. It's very well-written. It's very well-written. I mean.
It's all from somebody, probably.
Don't we all? Chat GPT over there. No, I mean, that, I think that's a.
And let me explain, because these guys haven't seen it. So what, in Crown Point, I've been the city attorney there for a number of years. We have a couple of different complexes there, okay? And this particular one where Babe Ruth was at, that contract was written so that Babe Ruth can operate and maintain that field. That's not standard across the other facilities. Cal Ripken has a separate agreement that they, that they use. The Sports Plugs has a separate agreement there for the girls softball. But that was specifically put in place with them because we knew that they generated funds. We knew that they had a lot of volunteers that were associated with the program. And we basically said, you maintain it, you operate it, you have it, with the caveat that the city needs some time on that, right? The city needs to use that for certain things. And at the time that we wrote that, the Corn Dogs wasn't even contemplated, right? And we sat down with them and said, hey, how do we want to do this, right? And we have an agreement with the Corn Dogs where it's basically a facility use agreement that they have for certain dates and times, but all that is coordinated through their, between the Corn Dogs and Babe Ruth, right? So we just kind of married those two guys together and said, hey, they're going to pay a fee to the city for the field usage, but you guys operate, and then where Babe Ruth makes their money on that is concessions, right? So Babe Ruth's running the concessions. They have some agreement with, we do have an alcohol license there that they can use during the Corn Dog games, and they have some deal where the Corn Dogs get some alcohol sales, but then the Babe Ruth still has the concessions on it. Now, don't get me wrong, that agreement says 100% that Babe Ruth maintains those fields. That agreement also says that the city can come in and review the books, right? And see where the money's going, if the fields aren't maintained to a certain standard. But there's been times where, for whatever reason, sign-ups, COVID. Um, but there's been times where, uh, for whatever reason, sign-ups, COVID, things of that nature, where the cities come in and said, hey, we, we do have some extra funds that we've generated, we know that you guys are hurting for whatever the reason may be, right? We had no, no players in twenty twenty-one or whatever because of the, the pandemic, uh, where the city has come in and, and, um, participated in some of that field maintenance, just because we knew there was a shortfall there, right? That at no, uh, action by- Action by Babe Ruth, right? And so, um, really why that agreement was put in place that way was because of the, this, the manpower that's involved for field maintenance, right?
Sure.
The, the, and we've seen this at, at other, other facilities, the minute that the city takes it over, girls softball is a perfect example. Those parents don't do anything. This is a city field, you guys take care of it, and our parks guys are running around like bandits, right? We saw that, we learned from that. Uh, I think that's why you see a lot of the turf going in in Crown Point, is because we just, you can't keep up with it, right? I think the softball fields all got turfed, uh, in fields this year. It, it, you know, it started well before Babe Ruth, even with the, with the football fields. I mean, that was a, a big deal with the football. The football was a partnership there, and we, we put those turf fields in. So because of the manpower and because of the cost of this maintenance that, that is out there, um, Crown Point has gone to a lot of that turf and trying to, trying to reduce that. But Babe Ruth is not turf. They maintain those fields, and, uh, basically it's all on them, and the city just comes in and says, okay, where, where are your books, right? What, what are you spending the money on? Just to have your checks and balances, right? To verify that what Babe Ruth is, um, is actually generating is going back into those fields and not for some, you know, aloof reason. So a- anything specific, I guess, on, on those terms or, uh, on that contract, I mean, I'd be happy to answer more on that, but that was the reason why we put that in there. I mean, and, and I, I look at that as a similar, um, operation or a similar organization of what these guys are doing here. And probably needs to be relooked at. I think that agreement's maybe twenty seventeen?
Uh, sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen, yeah. I mean, it probably needs to be relooked at, because like anything, I mean, we, we didn't anticipate some things, you know, we, like, again, we didn't anticipate the Corn Dogs. Nobody knew, right? It was just that it fell in our lap, and luckily, uh, uh, it, it provided exposure to Babe Ruth, it provided exposure to the Corn Dogs, and it probably needs some amendments here, but we, it was kind of a test first, right? It was like, we didn't know where the Corn Dogs were going to go, or what they were going to do after the first year. And so, um, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good agreement and probably a good example to what may be able to be put in place here with, uh, with these baseball guys.
For sure. No, I agree.
No, I mean, it, I, I just briefly looked at, we only got it yesterday. So we had a chance to, I had a chance to, to look through it, and I, I, I too liked some of the wordage. Uh, I do have a couple more questions, um, in, in regards to the Indiana Bulls. Is that, um, do you guys have a separate board within a board that runs strictly your travel program?
Our board is, it runs the pro, in-house and travel.
Okay, so it's, it's one-
All encompassing.
Okay, and do you see that as not a conflict of interest?
I, I haven't.
Okay.
No.
I do. I'm just going to be straight about it, because like I said.
I've always, like I said, I've always had in-house come first. They take priority for everything.
Right.
And now scheduling, game scheduling, practice.
Yeah. I, it's been, it's been my experience, and I've been doing this a long time too, uh, that, uh, that changes. And that's, that's a concern that I personally have, only because I've lived it, okay? So I will just tell you upfront that you're, you're one of a, of a deal that is going to metamorphose, okay? As, as it goes, and as your exposure continues, and, and as more and more outsiders want to be a part of it, and as more and more leagues of that caliber infiltrate. I mean, the Midwest used to be dead man's zone as far as, as major league and, and high school and college, and it's really taken out its own, with domes and some of these other things, it, it has, in the last fifteen or twenty years, it has, it's come a long way, and it's not stopping, okay? Uh, that, that's just my personal take. I mean, I, like I said, I, I've been a part of, of some of that kind of stuff back in the day, so I, I have a little bit of an understanding. But yeah, uh, two things that I personally have an issue with is length of contract. I think twenty-five years is way too long, cause things do change, and, and rapid, Corn Dogs are a prime example, okay? So I think that I would be more entertaining of something in the ten-year lease, so that we could at least address it. As our town continues to expand, and at some point in time, perhaps we need more facilities, or our facilities grow, and we move softball off and give you guys the softball field. I mean, I don't know where this is headed, but I mean, at the current rate of growth, even with some of the, the, the inflation and this, that, or whatever, we're still, we're not slowing down, and it's a, it's a fairly young commi, uh, community. I mean, we're, I, I think you guys are experiencing, uh, you know, a growth that is going to continue. Maybe not as rapidly, but I think it's going to continue. So I think more and more pressure is going to be put on you guys to have what it takes to, and pretty soon you're going to come to us and go, hey.
I did that.
We need some more fields.
I did that, I did that five years ago.
Right, exactly.
I got laughed out of this building.
Correct. And, and, and part of what we're trying to do is we're working on what we call a five-year master plan, not just for the parks, but also for the town. They're looking at expansion, we're looking at, within that expansion, where can we best address the needs that are going to, we're going to face down the road, okay? And part of that is facilities. We need to hammer out another twenty acres somewhere where we can say, hey, well, guess what? Twenty acres in St. John right now are the, they're slim and none. You can build, you can build on a, a, on a marsh, or you can build on a hill, but that's pretty much it. Cause that's the, the only non-desirable property. So part of the annexation and expansion to the south and to the east is something that we have to look at as far as providing more opportunities for this league to expand, okay? I don't know how that's going to work yet, okay? But we're relatively new, we're getting involved with this, uh, you know, for, for some of us, this is our first year, okay? Uh, I think I would not have laughed you out of, out of the room, okay? I, I would, I would have asked people involved at the time, well, what's up with that? Okay, only because been there, done that. I, I, I have some experience there. So I'm on your side, as far as that goes. But at the same token, I also have issues with you guys controlling what I consider to be a questionable non-for-profit organization, okay, in the Indiana Bulls, and, and then a non-for-profit organization in St. John Youth Baseball. So I would have an issue with that. I've seen and, and been experienced with many an organizations that claimed that they were non-for-profit, only to find out that's not in fact the case. Top Tier is a prime example, okay? So I'm just going to give you, you know, my background with that. So I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't at least express my opinion on moving forward. I think we're going to have to have some sort of a separation, so to speak, or a board within a board, or an executive board, or something along that line, where you guys can concentrate, and we can have some input into where that's headed, okay? Because I don't want that to be locked in for ten years, only to find out now we're ten percent St. John kids and ninety percent outside. Okay, that's.
We understand the concern. That's something that, I mean.
No, no, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just voicing my, my, my personal concern, okay?
Would it make it, 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 just like what we were talking about with, would it be, I guess, make you less concerned if, and, and if you guys were okay with it, having a park representative on their board?
That's up to them.
Would you guys, is that something that would be okay? I mean, how many, how many board members does St. John Baseball have?
Fourteen. There's fourteen board positions, twelve are filled.
Is it, is it possible to have somebody from, as a representative?
In our bylaws, you have to have a child within the league.
Understand, but this, this, this is a new lease and agreement that we're, we're coming up with.
Again, I mean, we're, we're, I don't know if these guys can answer that right here, not tonight. I mean, we need to look at our bylaws and review that, but we'll make note of it and something to consider for sure.
Okay.
We're not, we're not dismissing it.
I guess, in a perfect scenario, I'd love to see whether it's an executive board or a board within the board that can specify and be come to in the issues of things directly related with the Indiana Bulls, different from St. John Youth Baseball?
They don't have a position on our board.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, there, there's no say from them. There's no, none of them are on our board.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but they have some, how can I say it? Um, they have some outside control in how things are done. That much I do know, okay?
Is control as far as what?
Uh, how things are done, how, how, you know, performance, costs, this, that, or whatever.
They're, they're, the only thing that they've, their only control is how you appear on a field. They have to wear a hat forward.
Correct.
Pants.
Well, you do represent their organization.
You're representing the brand, but there was no difference than the Tomahawks. I had the same expectations.
Well, the expectations are, are great, but I just, I'm just saying, I, it's been my experience, so I'm, I'm just citing past experiences. So I don't, I don't want to belabor it, but at the same token, I would like to at least visit that, and I'm not saying to put that in a lease agreement or anything like that.
We understand the concern.
I'm, I'm just, yeah, it, it's more a personal, personal thing, because I've seen things start that way, only to have them take over and what, what was once one thing completely different down the road, so that's just my concern. Anybody, Nicole, you got anything you want to, uh?
Um, yeah, I do. I've got a couple of questions, just off from what a couple of things that are said. You mentioned earlier, and I was trying to keep up with you, about adding mounds and turf to the four fields, to the, you know, like thirty-five thousand in the last year or so, whatever.
Uh, three of the four, we put just turf runways for the portable mounds.
Okay.
That wasn't thirty-five thousand. That was, uh, I think, I believe fifteen thousand.
Okay, and you said turf runways to the portable mounds?
It was a turf runway so the portable mound could sit on, so you're not destroying the grass.
I got you. You're not dragging the grass, okay? Cause the rest of the fields otherwise are grass.
Uh, the Babe, yes.
Okay.
Civic, Babe Ruth, and Field Four.
I'm hearing turf, and I'm thinking, then why so much water? Okay, uh, it's just the turf runways, and that's on all four of them?
Uh, all, uh, three of them. Three of the four at Heartland have it.
All right, um. You said that you have a retiree that cuts the grass at Civic Park and Heartland Park?
Yes.
So define for me, when you're saying Heartland, just the boys' baseball area?
The boys' base, yeah, we, we're separate entity from softball. We take care of the four fields and Babe Ruth.
When you say you mow them, I'm trying to identify where you're mowing.
All within the four fields, fields one, two, three, four.
Okay.
And then a big field, Babe Ruth off White Oak.
Got it, so just the fields.
Inside the fence.
What about the, uh, the T-ball fields? Don't you coexist with softball on some of that?
We do not cut that.
Okay.
You cut it?
We do treat the weeds on the-
We treat the weeds on the field.
On that one that we share.
On the one field closest to the little swings.
That's what the park cuts down.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Let's not try to clarify, who's mowing what right now?
Uh, because the town, I believe, cuts outside the field, Fields Four, and then that air, that common area, I guess you want to call it, outside the T-ball. But we pay for the weed control on all four, on, on all the fields.
We do do the weed control outside.
I know we do.
Because I know there's all this talk about inside the fence and outside the fence, but that's not in the agreement, so that's where I'm just trying to identify.
Yeah, within all, within that fence, we put all the weed control, cut the grass, maintain field material.
Whether or not that language is in the Civic Park one, I don't know, but.
But we do the same here, too.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, at Civic Park then, cause obviously that park's huge.
Everything.
You're mowing the fields?
Within the fence.
Okay.
Miller, Rookie, and the T-ball. Well, the T-ball, it, we don't cut, because that's part of the town, the outfield.
Cuts that.
Okay, so just the two fields then, the Miller, Rookie?
Just the two here at Civic, yeah.
Okay.
Miller and Rookie. We do the field control for these two fields and T-ball field.
Got it, okay. Um, and then your manager for your concession stand runs a concession stand at Heartland and here at Civic?
Yes.
And that is the same person that kind of oversees both of those?
Yes.
And it's that person, you said, that has the, um, food safety certification?
Yes.
Other than your, um, manager operating at a Civic, is there any other use of that concession stand for any other activities?
Not for us.
The town in any way, Mike?
What was the question?
The concession stand at Civic, where that's-
Yeah, I, I don't think so.
I don't believe it's-
So if you guys aren't running it, it's not run?
Uh, correct, yeah. Same thing with the, like, the bathrooms. I know we talked about automatic locks here one time, but like, they have a key for the bathrooms to unlock them at Civic. Otherwise, they normally stay locked.
So unless, so they're not just open regularly for-
No, unless, until we do the automatic locks, then they would be open.
No, I just thought you guys know, we are considering going to some sort of an automatic lock system that we can operate remotely so that they can be open when they're skating, cause we do-
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, for the use of the rest of the park.
Playing basketball, whatever, whatever the case may be, because at the end of the day, it is a park, okay? We have to try to accommodate them too, so we will let you know if and when that happens. We're in discussion.
The bathrooms, not the concessions.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm talking about bathrooms, yeah.
Bathroom.
They don't, they don't do bathrooms at all, but town cleans those and everything.
Well, no, they said bathrooms are cleaned by an outside company.
At Heartland.
At Heartland.
Okay, that's what I was clarifying, it's only at Heartland.
Okay, then I misunderstood.
That's where I was like trying to-
Okay, I misunderstood.
At Heartland, yeah, we have a company.
That's the kind of stuff that I wanted to clarify, got it. So your outside company there only cleans at Heartland?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and you don't have anything to do with Civic?
Not the bathrooms.
Not the bathrooms.
Got it, okay, um.
All right. Anything else, Nicole?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Um, the, actually, my question was for Alex.
Yeah.
Uh, I want to go back to your Crown Point, just to kind of give the board a little bit more understanding with that. It was just, you said a year or so ago that it was with the Corn Dogs?
Correct. Well, I think they just finished their second season this year.
Okay, prior to that, um, obviously in the lease, it talks about the, they cannot, that Babe Ruth can't sublet, it has to go through the city.
Yeah, so I think what the intent there with the conversation there was, was that they couldn't just like take their entire operation and just say, now it's going to be somebody else.
Sure.
Right? Um, we haven't, or haven't monitored, or haven't had any reason to look at what other usage they have on the fields.
Now with the Corn Dogs there?
Yeah, and, well, the, so the Corn Dogs had approached the mayor's office and said, hey, we, we need a facility, right? Uh, we thought that that Babe Ruth facility was the best facility for them. We approached Babe Ruth and said, hey, here's the deal, and before we amended the Babe Ruth agreement, we were like, we don't even know what the Corn, I mean, at first we thought this is a joke, right? I mean, just to be honest with you, like, there's no way these guys are going to operate, and then all of a sudden they win the championship, right? Um, and so, uh, we didn't amend it. Uh, we had talked about amending it to allow for the Corn Dogs in year two, but the conversation with Ralph and the Corn Dogs was, I, I think we're going to a bigger facility.
Okay.
So we didn't end up amending it, and then we haven't had anybody else approach us for the use of that, and so it just never.
As part of that, okay, prior to that, um, prior to the Corn Dogs coming in, were these fields rented out by anybody before that for sub, or not even for subletting, but for alternative to the Babe Ruth?
No, they were built specifically in Babe Ruth move, so we had, if, uh, for anybody that may recall, there was old fields off Indiana Avenue, just down the road, just south. And we sold those fields, and these fields were rebuilt specifically for the Babe Ruth operation. Yeah, so there was nobody before them.
Okay.
So when those were built, um, they were built with the intent that Babe Ruth was going to be the ones using them, because we're displacing them.
From the other place.
Yeah, they were, and the old fields were just old and outdated. Um, there was a, uh, an entity next door that was expanding, so it was more like an economic development kind of deal, like he needed to expand, and we had the, uh, originally where these fields sit, uh, and this may be too much information, but originally where these fields sit, by the prior mayor, that's where the Sportsplex was supposed to go. And so that didn't happen. The Sportsplex ended up going off of, uh, Indiana and Hundred Ninth, and so we had these fields, or we had this property, and the mayor decided, well, we're going to, either we're going to sell this or use it, and we're going to use it and shift our baseball fields that way.
Okay, so that addresses on, kind of what we were talking about in that sense. Mike and I were talking about kind of rentals and stuff like that, and I was thinking that was the Babe Ruth field as well. The other fields in town that, in, in the city, that, um, the city rents out for private organizations to rent, and the right of first option each year, all of that. Um, we've had some discussions about that kind of across the board with fields, so this is related, but, uh, because this is something that you're doing, I wanted the board to be able to ask questions of you, of that. In your and my discussions about that, you'd indicated that you really don't have problems because you're vetting basically who's coming in, and fields are coveted, and they want to rent, so there's, the concern's always damage, right? Of, of what's done, um.
And we've had that. I mean, we've had that damage. We had the, and, and we actually had a, the, and this wasn't necessarily, it was at our Sportsplex, but it was at the Dome.
Got it.
And we, we had an incident where we had, there's like a, a football, um, I don't know, showcase, or whatever you want to call it, right? Yeah, and then there was a fight there, and, and so basically that, even though that was at a private facility, the Dome is a private facility, but it's at our Sportsplex, we had some conversations with them, and it was determined that in the best interest of, you know, the city and their operation, that that organization would not, not be invited back and, and not come back. Uh, we've had that at, at our softball fields. Uh, the city doesn't get involved, uh, and luckily, I don't think we've had any incidences that we've had to, but we don't get involved in that at Babe- But we don't get involved in that at Babe Ruth or at Cal Ripken. Those guys are kind of running their own facilities, right?
Being renting it out themselves?
Correct. And so, um, I don't know that they, again, I don't know that they do, right? I think they, they, they use it mostly for their baseball operations. Um, there's always been, like I said, an understanding that if the city needs to use it for whatever reason, that, that, you know, there, we have a conversation and say, yep, we're open, or we know ahead of time and we, we make the accommodations to do that.
Kind of book it accordingly.
Yeah. Now, at the sportsplex itself, where we, where the football and the softball play, I think there are two, two baseball fields there as well. Um, we've had that. We've had adult leagues that get out of hand and it's, hey, your team's not welcome back. I, I recently sold, but had a, a gym on North Main Street where the volleyball program would play. And we've had that there, right? And they've, they've approached us, the building owner, and said, hey, we have a problem with the team and we're, we're not going to allow them in here. We appreciate you if you didn't allow them in here too. And we had a problem, see you later, right? Um, so, yeah, we've had that at the sportsplex and we've, we've had to ask softball teams and, and, and soccer teams that rent the place that, hey, you've damaged this. And, um, I know the Parks Department's gone back to a couple of them, issued invoices for damage to the turf or whatever the case may be, because they were using metal spikes and where they weren't supposed to, or, or things of that nature. So the Parks Department usually addresses that directly with those teams and, and the invitation may be that your invitation's revoked.
All right.
Does, on, on the. Does Saint John Baseball currently sublease it off?
We've had two senior leagues on the big field on Babe Ruth, and one won't be invited back again because they did something similar to what he's saying.
Okay.
Destroyed it.
All right. So you don't sublease to the Indiana Bulls then? You're just in, okay.
Bulls North or Tomahawks, whatever. That's it. There's no other, there's, we've never, there's no other outside organization leasing it.
Okay. And is that something?
With that, though, you just said Bulls North. So it is?
As we changed from the Tomahawks to Bulls North, that, that's what I mean by that.
Okay.
Not Bull Central. Those teams are not using that, that, they're not using this complex.
Okay. And is, is this with ideas in mind to have tournaments here at some point in time? No?
The only tournament we've had is our Mother's Day tournament for the last eight years.
Okay.
And all the money generated, again, goes back into the program.
I'm just asking the questions, that's all.
It's been the same, it's the same tournament. Set, this will be the eighth one in May, if we were to run it.
Yeah. And to answer the question, Nicole, at the sportsplex, yeah, what, what the Parks Department does is they go back to those teams that have rented the prior year. And they say, hey, we're scheduling for twenty twenty-four. What dates and times do you want? And they commit to those dates and times at whatever price that the Parks Department has set. And they have to until a certain date to book that. And then if they don't, or they, they drop dates or times, then there's a waiting list, basically. And they go to those waiting lists and say, hey, here's, here's openings. Can you take them or not? And they just work their way down the list. And they're doing that now for twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
So basically what, like you're saying, the Cal Ripken and a Babe Ruth, that you're kind of their own entity. They have to take care of their own fields.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. The park.
The park's not renting their fields out, not trying to take the fields from them. But then the other ones that are rented out is a different entity. And then the park board maintains those fields. Like they do all the maintenance on them.
So we don't have a park board, but our Parks Department, yeah. So our Parks Department does that.
It'll be the city that's paying for it.
Correct, at the, at the sportsplex. Now, again, should something come up, and we've, we've done it, you know, they just hosted the Cal Ripken World Series, right? They came to us and to the city and said, hey, we're hosting this. We're, you know, we have the facilities that do this. They worked out with Babe Ruth to use those fields or whatever other fields. And, um, this is what we need from the city, right? And here's the ask. Either we say, yes, we can, no, we can't. Or the city says, you know, well, yeah, we can, but we need this from you guys. And no different than when we did the, um, uh, the Hitting Barn there, right? They came to the city and said, we need a Hitting Barn. This is what we're looking at. Here's the property. Can we use the city property? Um, this is what we have in funds. They came to the RDC and cut a deal with the RDC, uh, for some funding with a repayment over a ten-year period, which they ended up just paying off, uh, actually last month, I think a year and a half early. Um, and so it's just been a conversation that as things come up, uh, is there a new agreement? Is there an amendment to the agreement? And we, we deal with it as it, as it kind of pops up and as those organizations find different things that they need to do. But, yeah, we, we don't get it. The Parks Department does not get involved in the actual operation or, or maintenance of either one of those two facilities.
I think that's kind of little what, what's happening here is almost like the park board is trying to take over everything. And I've said that and we've had a lot of arguments, but we're such small with softball and baseball, they're small fields. There's not much extra out there. So if that's something that we're wanting to start renting everything off, that's something we need to start looking at more space, kind of how Sherville does, they have those four large softball fields that they ran out the baseball, softball, and they can do a hundred percent what they want, but nobody's messing with the Cal Ripken, Babe Ruth, in-house, you know, in-house travel team, basically, is what that would be.
Mm-hmm. And that's exactly why those agreements were set up that way is because, I mean, yes, there may be some additional revenue that's generated to the city, but it's not going to meet what it takes to maintain those fields. And we've, we see it with softball. The minute that we say there's city maintained fields, all the volunteers are poof, gone.
Right.
They don't want to do concessions. They don't want to do field. They, they want to show up to the game and check out when the game's over, right? Where, different story at Cal Ripken. I mean, those guys are there all the time. Those guys at Babe Ruth are there all the time. Um, and it's just, we, just, you just don't have the manpower at the city level to do that. And that's exactly why those agreements were put that, put in place that way. And those came, or those improvements to those fields came later. And so I think that, and Mayor Dave's a great friend of mine, but I think he learned his lesson on the, on the sportsplex and said, we're not maintaining each other. There's just no way. There's no way. Um, and, but those other fields weren't intended for, um, tournaments where I think the sportsplex was. And so David said, if, if he said it once, he said it a million times. It's, it's for our in-house program, Monday through Thursday. And where we're going to make our money is on the tournaments on the weekends. That's when we bring in the softball tournaments and the, you know, everything else that comes in there. And the rentals that Nicole's talking about. Um, and so tho- those fields there have the ability to generate those funds to maintain, right? Where we didn't see that, uh, necessarily with Babe Ruth or with Cal Ripken because of the limited field space and the amount of players that were actually playing there. Right? It was a different, it was a different setup than what he had at the sportsplex.
That helps. Thanks for clarifying that. I need to explain it much better.
Guys, looking at the lease, and I don't know how hard you've looked at it, is there anything currently that's on there that you would like to change?
On which lease are you referring to?
The one that's invalid. The one that you currently had, or we thought we had.
The twenty sixteen.
No, I, I honestly, everything's been running good as far as, I mean, we're, we're maintaining everything. I believe the fields look fantastic.
No, they do.
Um, we're providing the program that we set forth for all the in-house kids. Um, I, no, I.
It's what we learned to live with.
Yeah, I mean.
No, I understand. No, no, they, they do look good.
Until you guys called, honestly, I've, I've not had a, I've not had a problem. I think, I feel we've.
I think it was all prefaced by when you guys made the announcement that you made, as far as the association with the Indiana Bulls. People automatically went down a path and inquired. And they were like, how could you guys do this? How did you let them? And we, our basic response was, well, we, A, we didn't know, and B, we weren't informed, and C, we had no say in it. And that's not, neither here nor there, but that's kind of how we had to respond to the people that asked the questions, okay? Uh, and there were some that were fine and there were some that were not so fine with that, with the whole concept. But I think what we're doing here tonight, you guys are explaining where you're coming from. We're explaining where we're coming from. I think because it's, it's, you know, going to be broadcast, people can, that have any questions or concerns, they can hear what, what, what's being said and form their own opinion. I mean, and it is what it is. So, I mean, that's why I'm just asking if there was something in that current agreement that you thought, well, you know, can't live with that. Or don't like that, wish we could have changed it, but we didn't. Because how we understand it, okay? And maybe you can correct me because you've been around long enough. It was basically a modified softball agreement because softball came in in twenty twelve. And your, your lease agreement started in twenty sixteen. And if you look at them side by side, they're pretty close.
I know there was a lease before that because I believe they took over and, uh, one of those fields that, uh, Heartland was donated from, uh, was it Altof?
Mm-hmm.
In oh-six?
Mm-hmm.
So I know there was a lease and then that was in sixteen. I, I just remember Forbes and Kill, that was changed in two thousand sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what that previous lease was. I couldn't even tell you that.
Okay.
I don't, I never had my eyes on that. So that was the only one I've ever been associated with.
Anybody else get anything?
Just the utility side too. We could take a look at that. Water, um, even a little bit electric and stuff like that, which I don't, I have some of the water numbers here and stuff like that. But I know the parks pretty much pays for all the water sprinkler systems, all that stuff.
What is it, can I ask what it is monthly?
Uh, well, I have like, I, I have show here, Heartland Baseball Sprinkler. It's six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. I don't think I'm missing my, the previous one, but it ranges, the lowest is four hundred and twenty-three dollars in a month and the highest is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars in a month. Uh, and then I have some Babe Ruth sprinkler numbers here too. They're, uh, ranges too, which I can share this with, you know.
It's six thousand a year on the water, Mike?
Uh, so far, yeah. I mean, so far, six thousand four hundred so far. Um, I could, and I think I'm, there should be one more payment, I believe. Uh, or one more bill for the year and stuff like that. But, um, I'll go back and, you know, check and stuff like that too. But, but, yeah, I just, I think.
What was the electric?
I, I don't have that. I, I don't have all of it. I don't have all the electric.
What was the Babe Ruth water?
Uh, one thousand seventy-eight dollars and two cents.
For the whole year?
I have four. I found four bills, which I'm, I think I'm short two though, because, uh, Heartland Baseball Sprinkler was six, so that I had.
So for the year?
For four months or for the year?
Uh, Babe Ruth was, this is for the year so far.
We don't really turn them on, Nicole, until, we tried to wait until May first, right?
Unless it was missing a month, uh, which could have been, I mean, that would neglect it April. I mean, I'm sure that four hundred and twenty-three dollar one was probably for April for Heartland. But I have six Heartland sprinkler ones right now.
Well, that's a big difference when we've been told it's been six thousand a month, it's been three thousand a month. And now we're here, it's only six thousand for the whole year. I mean, obviously, how are we supposed to know what we're talking about when our numbers are different every time I hear them? You just told me a few minutes ago, you, you've seen the bill for three thousand at Babe Ruth.
I said that?
Yes, you did, when it's sitting over there, yeah.
I don't think I said I've seen it.
But.
I think, I think to, I think to claim that I've seen something that's egregious.
A month compared to a whole year.
I don't know who was saying six thousand a month. I, I don't think anybody said.
Part of our concern, guys, is in a dollar a year lease, which is technically how that was worded in the beginning. Um, if it's costing the Parks Department money to operate your fields, that's an issue, okay? If, if combined, water and electric and sanitation is eight, ten thousand dollars combined, whatever porta-potties, what, throw it all in there. Uh, yeah, that's money that we don't recuperate in any way, shape or form, okay? So, I mean, moving forward, that could be part of what would be in a new agreement too, that some of, some of them expenses are, are somehow encapsulated, whether it's through, uh, you guys paying for them. We take, you know, hypothetically, maybe five dollars or ten dollars per registration to offset them costs. Once he gets the hard numbers, we'll be able to give you guys that and you guys can discuss that and say, hey, let's just take it, let's just take it out, okay? Or let's, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there because there again, we did a little bit of assuming that all that was on you guys. We're finding out that's not the case, okay? And I'm not saying that you guys were wrong or that, you know, we just didn't know, okay? Through our investigation, we're finding out some of these things. And we don't feel as a park, if you guys have exclusive rights to, to, to the fields, that some of them costs are encumbered by you guys.
Fair enough.
Okay? I mean, whether, like I said, whether it's electric or, or sanitation or, or water. So, I mean, we're going to get some of them numbers. We're going to come back to you with that. And I guess what we're going to try to do is come up with a proposal, and I'm not going to lie, we're going to, we're going to probably use a lot of what you.
Why I gave it to Nicole.
It's good.
Thank you.
It, I, I, I was very impressed. I thought you did a great job. And we may include a few nuances here that are specifically.
I have all the faith in Nicole that she'll make that thing way better.
You saved us a lot of money. I was saying, it helps to not have to reinvent the wheel.
So, I mean, that's why, you know, you guys are here tonight and that's where we're trying to, to get, so that we're all, we're all good moving forward. Because I think tonight we've answered some questions that the public was interested in hearing, okay? Uh, I think you guys do a great job. I, you know, I, I've been out there multiple times. I have, like I said, I have grandkids in softball and baseball, so I understand what it's all about. And as someone that's been there, done that, had worked both ends of the rake and had to dig out the bases and had to do all that kind of, I, 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 I understand. I, I, I know what, what it takes. I know what it takes. So I appreciate all your effort.
Running a hamster wheel just never.
It is, it is. And, you know, and, and I said the same thing to softball. I was out in the spring this year and walked the whole place while you guys, and they were doing their field maintenance day. And there was hundreds of people out there pitching in, doing their job, you know, whether it was painting, whether it was raking, whether it was this, whether it was that. And it was so cool to see. It was a beautiful day that day. It was probably seventy-five degrees in, in, in April, which is unusual, unusual. But, I mean, it was a beautiful day. But, yeah, I mean, I just, I was impressed. I really was. And, uh, so I, I thank you for all your work. I appreciate you guys coming tonight. I have nothing else. Anybody else have?
Just what other expenses? Mike, weren't there other ones with the, was it the porta-potties? Trying to think of other things that you had itemized before. I think that's going to be a lot of it. It's just going to be getting out whatever, pulling those bills from their treasure.
Porta restrooms, I mean, we, yeah, we do get them. I think there's, Babe Ruth has two there, I guess, four, I mean, there are four, whoever.
Babe Ruth has two and, uh, the T-ball has one, and then Civic has one.
Uh.
Also for the park, correct?
It's also a park, yeah. I mean, we're not asking.
Are those open during park?
Oh, yeah, those are.
Porta-potty?
The porta-potties are?
It's there until the weather breaks, so I would assume.
I think those aren't locked in any fashion than that here at Civic.
No. The only one I would say would be somewhat just like, on the baseball side, would be Babe Ruth, just because it's right next to the field.
Yeah, but with this golf, now I'm not going to lie.
That's true.
With this golf, literally wandering right through your whole.
Between the exercise, the dog walkers, the frisbee golf.
I, I a hundred percent agree. I mean, but I just, we just want to make sure that we look at everything and, and say, hey.
And that one's not enclosed?
No, 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 they're all open.
No, they're all free.
Do we do the, do we, uh, supply the dumpsters out there?
Yes. The dumpsters are the towns, yeah. Yeah.
Which the entire town uses, just not baseball, FYI?
No, right. And these are some of the things we're, we're, the more we dig, the more we're finding out that it's mixed use, you know, individual use.
And couches and chairs.
Couches, refrigerators.
Carpets.
It's a donation to baseball.
Yeah.
They just have to put them up in front of their yard and the trash people.
And we have talked, I'm not going to lie to you, we, we've talked with softball too about, um, I, I have a little bit of a problem with the driveway that goes along Midwest because of the way the cars are parked, okay? And the fact that they're in a hurry to find the parking spot at the Boys End way down there. It's narrow, okay? And I'm not going to lie to you, they, they drive too, people drive too fast.
A lot of foot traffic that goes through there, yeah.
Okay. Uh, we are in conversations to have.
Speed bumps?
Speed bumps. And I, and, and, and I say that only as a safety issue because the way the cars are, are parked there, a little kid's chasing a ball, runs in between them cars, you don't see him until it's too late.
Mike, didn't, I thought they had them.
They won't put them in because of the plows.
Right. We know, we're talking to someone that would, would put in something that's temporary, okay? That could be removed so that it could be plowed. Because just like you guys lock that gate.
Yeah.
You know, in the back so that you have, you know, you keep the, the riffraff out of there. We're just, we don't want to wait until we have a problem.
It's a good idea.
So, I mean, that's just something that we've brought up as a park board and we're looking into that. But I just want to let you guys know, if at some point in time you see, see them putting them up there come next spring, when the, when the foot traffic really starts to pick up. Because the playground's right there. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of things going on right there. And I'm, you know, we're just concerned, no one wants to have to make that phone call. I know, I don't.
We'd be all for that, yeah.
I'm sure you would be, but I just want to give you an idea of what we're thinking. These are some of the things that we're willing to take on, okay? Because we, we see a need, okay? And there again, if there's things that are associated with the facilities that you see, that, please bring them up to us. So that we can address it too and say, hey, based on the agreement, this is on us. Based on the agreement, this is on you. Never hurts to ask. I mean, but something like these speed bumps are something that I'm talking about, that just enhances the entire park and makes it safer for everybody. So, um, that's really.
I think where you're, I mean, just to kind of close from our end, I think where, where we're going, where you're going is that if there's a, a mutual cooperation, then that builds a mutual trust.
Correct. Absolutely. Hundred percent.
Once that happens and once that trust is established and it's maintained, I mean, the improvements are endless. I mean, like I said, we've, we've seen that in Crown Point and, um, you know, we, we let the guys do what they do and they do it well. And, um, it's always a back and forth. Hey, we need this from the city and hey, we need this from, from Babe Ruth or Cal Ripken. And there's no, there's no spats, there's no qualms about it. And, um, I, I think you guys can see that it, it's working well. it's always a back and forth, hey, we need this from the city, and hey, we need this from, from Babe Ruth or Cal Ripken, and there's no, there's no spats, there's no qualms about it, and, um, I, I think you guys can see that it, it's working well, they're, they're doing, they're, they're, they're making progress, and we're hopeful that that transpires here in St. John as well.
Alright, can you guys do us a favor? Um, we ask softball the same thing, between now and let's say maybe the end of next week, which is like the 10th of November, if you could kind of put together some financials for us, so that we understand the, how that works, and any requests that you might have, as far as this agreement goes, we, in the meantime, will get together and, and get them numbers for electric, sanitation, water, and, and such, so that we can send them to you, and then you guys can kind of pull apart the whole thing and say, yeah, we're in, we're not, we're, you know, we, we, we'll, we'll talk about that, we, we won't talk about that, and find out where you guys are at, and then, that way, we can kind of, using Alex's base Crown Point agreement, basically, like I say, flux off of that, and you can share that with them and explain any questions that they may have as far as that goes, and we can come to some sort of a mutual understanding that we all can live with.
Perfect.
Any questions?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? Want to make sure everybody gets their two minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourned, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it very much.